Good evening. If everyone, please take your seats. We're going to get our meeting started very soon. Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock PM on Tuesday, February the 27th, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone who's in our chamber audience, as well as our listening audience at WCBU. I'd also like to welcome the audience watching on Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Member Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Present.
Councilmember Graham. Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Reganbach.
Here.
Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
And Councilmember Euler. We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I would like to recognize Madam Clerk Stephanie Tar, who has a special acknowledgement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize a member of my staff. All of you know her, Trina Bonds. She's my chief deputy. She's also known as the Queen of Liquor. She processes all the liquor licenses in Peoria, and our customers love her. Well, she just achieved something, a milestone in her career. I've got to read my notes here, because there's quite a bit to it. She obtained her Certified Municipal Clerk. It's also known as her CMC. You're going to be seeing that after her name from here on out. She obtained her Certified Municipal Clerk designation from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. This is not just a personal achievement, but a testament to her dedication, commitment, and unwavering pursuit of excellence as Chief Deputy City Clerk in the Peoria City Clerk's Office. To earn this designation, Trina had to demonstrate her willingness to invest extensive time and effort into education programs, coupled with invaluable experience gained while working at the city. The CMC program equips clerks to navigate the complexities inherent in their roles by providing top-tier education in collaboration with Eastern Illinois University, the Municipal Clerks of Illinois, and the Central Illinois Municipal Clerks Organization. This program has encouraged excellence since 1970, fostering a community of over 4,700 certified municipal clerks worldwide. So it's quite an honor. Behind the CMC program stands the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, a cornerstone organization that champions continuing education and certification. Founded in 1947 with nearly 15,000 members, IIMC's primary mission revolves around promoting continuous learning and professional growth for municipal clerks globally. The significance of professional training for municipal clerks is further underscored by the Illinois State statute outlined in the Municipal Clerk Training Act, 65 ILCS 50. This legislation emphasizes the importance of ongoing education and training for municipal clerks, recognizing their pivotal role in ensuring the efficient functioning of local governance. Earning the Certified Municipal Clerk designation demands unwavering commitment and determination, as Trina can attest, to the long hours. The rigorous education requirements and dedicated learning hours signify a personal journey and an investment in delivering enhanced services to the community she serves. Trina's achievement is not just a celebration of her success, but a reflection of the collective dedication to excellence within her field. Throughout her commitment to continuous learning and professional growth, Trina embodies the values of diligence, integrity, and service, which define the essence of the Certified Municipal Clerk program. And with that, we just received today her plaque designating her Certified Municipal Clerk, her CMC. If you could all, please give her a hand.
I'd just like to thank everyone for this, well, especially Chief City Clerk Tar for this opportunity. Thanks, everyone. You're welcome. Thank you, Clerk Bonds. You make us very proud, and it really means that we have the best. I remember when you were acknowledged as a CMC Clerk Tar, and now we have two certified municipal clerks within Peoria City Government. So, we have the very best. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I have a special notice I'm going to read. This is a notice to our township electors pursuant to Public Act 095-0761. If you desire to have an item considered on the agenda at the annual town meeting to be held Tuesday, April 9th, 2024, at 6:00 PM, you are required to bring a specific request signed by 15 or more electors to the Township Clerk's Office no later than Friday, March 1st. Any group of registered voters may request an advisory question of public policy for consideration by the electors at the annual meeting by giving written notice of the specific advisory question to the Township Clerk in the same manner as required for an agenda item under subsection B of Section 30-10 of the Township Code. Before we go, Madam Clerk, into the Public Hearing section, I'm going to refer to our city manager in regard to these hearings.
Thank you. Our first public hearing pertains to the Lamont Special Service Area. If I could, I'd like to turn it over to our Corporation Council to just briefly discuss this.
Actually, Madam Mayor, if I may, we need to have the approval of the minutes unless I've missed those.
Okay. Oh, I skipped over that. Yes. Councilmember Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the Joint City Council and Town Board meeting held on February 13th, 2024, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Graham. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Madam Clerk?
We are at Public Hearings. 24-041 is a public hearing regarding the proposed West Lamont Avenue Special Service Area.
Can I get a motion to open the public hearing? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll turn the floor over to our Corporation Council briefly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pursuant to the Illinois compiled statutes, this is a public hearing provided for the establishment of special service areas. A group of residents, by way of introduction, a group of residents within the 1700 and 1800 block of Lamont Avenue expressed interest in the former sidewalk participation program. City staff provided an alternative approach where a majority of interested residents might initiate a special service area. Through a series of neighborhood meetings, the residents expressed interest in the special service area option presented by city staff, and that would include new gutter, new curb and gutter, as well as a mill and overlay of the street. The property owners within the special service area would contribute to the project, but that would be limited to 80% of the cost of the mill and overlay. The city will contribute the cost of the curb and gutter as a stormwater improvement in recognition of the previous expectations of participation in the sidewalk participation program and the actual condition of the curb and gutter. This hearing is being conducted to gather public input. The ordinance proposing the SSA was published on January 23rd, 2024, and set today as the public hearing. Following this public hearing, there's a period of 60 days within which petitioners could seek to oppose the special service area, but if a qualifying petition is not filed within that time, the ordinance establishing this special service area will be presented for approval on May 14th, 2024. And with that, Your Honor, you could ask for any public comments that might be wished to be made by members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hayes. At this time, if there's anyone who wants to speak, Public Hearing regarding the proposed W. Lamont Avenue, West Lamont Avenue Special Service Area, please come forth. If there's anyone who wants to speak to the public hearing on the West Lamont Avenue Special Service Area, please come forth. And lastly, if there's anyone who wants to speak to the public hearing regarding the West Lamont Avenue Special Service Area, please come forth. I would request a motion to close the public hearing. Moved by Councilmember Graham, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Graham, did you?
No, just two.
Thank you. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
24-42 is a public hearing regarding the proposed Galena Road Industrial Park Tax Increment Financing District.
Can I get a motion to open the public hearing? Moved by Councilmember Valpula, seconded by Councilmember Reganbach. Any comments, questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. And we have someone. Is that Mr. Rowe? Oh, Mr. Manager?
Thank you. We do have with us this evening Herb Klein, who is with Jacob and Klein. He was our TIF consultant, as well as Steve Klein, no relation, who's with the Economic Development Group. They are our consultants that helped us to prepare the TIF document. I asked them to just come forward to give a brief overview of the proposed TIF district on Galena Road that we're talking about, and then open up the public hearing after they make those comments, if we could. There's no action by council tonight on this item or the next item. It's just to receive the public input as part of the public hearing process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our office, along with the Economic Development Group, which is a municipal consulting firm, was asked to evaluate the Galena Road map area for inclusion in a TIF district, which is a statutory district established under Illinois law, and the city of Peoria has used them previously. There are 70 parcels in this TIF district. We did a parcel survey of all of those parcels, evaluating them for inclusion in TIF district under the TIF Act, and I'm happy to report that 95.7% of the parcels we deemed as qualified in meeting the qualifications as required under the Illinois law for the TIF Act. Of those, 35 of the parcels are vacant. We found that all of the vacant parcels qualify. As part of the process, one of the steps is to convene a joint review board, which all the taxing bodies that have taxing authority within the area are provided notice of the plan, and then certain of those members have an advisory vote to the council. That joint review board was convened and met on February 1st, and I'm happy to report that they voted to recommend approval of the TIF district to the council, finding that the area on the whole qualified, met the requirements of the TIF Act, and that the plan itself met the requirements of the TIF Act. So, with that, I think we turn it over to public comment.
Thank you very much. We have Mr. Robert Rowe. Can you come forth?
Hello. My name is Robert Rowe, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Heart of Illinois Group Sierra Club, to offer our advice on how to accomplish this development in a manner that will be consistent with the stated goals of the TIF Act and sound environmental safeguards. The TIF Act states that the mission specifically is to do this in compliance with conservation measures. And there are several environmental concerns with this development that will be, that will make this a more sustainable and more profitable project, if done right. These include the concern that the project is in proximity to a valuable and fragile popular nature preserve. One solution to this would be to provide a setback from the preserve boundary, including a walking trail and access to the nature preserve area, and make use of the proximity of this nature preserve to make this an attractive place to live and to work and to visit. Light pollution, it disrupts migrating and nesting birds. One alternative would be to require shielded downlights and low light security cameras. The money saved on electricity would be better put to remote sensors and secure design. Ensure the safety of both surface water and groundwater, particularly the San Cody Aquifer Waterwell. Allow no businesses and industries that potentially would emit hazardous water and air pollutants. Increased paved areas mean increased stormwater runoff directly into the sensitive riparian habitat and nesting areas. Alternatives: permeable pavers and limit the use of petroleum-based sealers. Direct water through holding ponds, which can be both scenic and practical. Noise abatement: enforce the noise ordinances, particularly for businesses such as gyms and other recreational venues. In summation, let's get this right, put revisions into the plan from the start, and see that they are properly enforced. Keeping it green will keep you in the black. I want to emphasize that this nature preserve is valued by thousands of visitors every year, and hopefully, the TIF district and the nature preserve can coexist. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in the public hearing regarding the proposed Galena Road Industrial Park Tax Increment Financing District? Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the proposed Galena Road Industrial Park TIF? Good afternoon.
Hi. I'm Fred Sep. I might be out of line. We might be talking, but I want to know, along with some of the other landowners, I mean, what's going to happen regarding, obviously there's going to be purchase of land. I mean, has there been any discussion on?
This is just open for public comment, not for Q&amp;A?
I'm sorry. I thought I might be out of line. I just thought I'd run it.
That's quite all right.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at the public hearing regarding the proposed Galena Road Industrial Park TIF? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is James Studdel. I am the president of the Skyline Drive Property Owners Association, which is directly adjacent to the proposed TIF on one section, and also, of course, adjacent to Forest Park Nature Center, which is also directly adjacent. I would just like to reinforce our neighborhoods' concerns that this be something that not change the nature of the environment in which we have chosen to invest and to live in, not only us, but of course also the other neighborhoods in the area and the nursing homes that are in the area. I would note that the TIF district guidelines do call for taking livability of the neighborhoods surrounding the district into account. I would ask that you would consider those livability standards when you are doing your planning. I would also wholeheartedly agree that lighting is a tremendous issue along the river. The subdivision has been quite concerned over the years with lighting, and the nursing homes have already faced issues with that and had actually had to spend a great deal of money in order to adjust their lighting to have the low lighting. So, if you would make sure that any ordinances that involve the TIF district involve these covered low-level lighting, so that we, particularly with the nature preserve right there, that we don't have the issue from the very beginning. And I also, last but not least, the San Cody Reservoir is right there. Any industrial project that's involved there that is releasing pollutants, literally right where Illinois American is drawing water out to serve half the city with their water, you really have to make sure the ordinances are taking special care to control for those issues. Last but not least, I would like to mention that I have reached out to the city three times to ask for information on this and have not heard back. Very nice, very cordial phone calls, once a week for the last three weeks, and I would appreciate hearing back so that we can be kept in the loop in this. And if there is a way that the Skyline Drive Homeowners Association can actually get literature on this, we would appreciate it so that we are in the loop and we understand what's going on, and I'll be kind, I'll be glad to share that with my fellow homeowners. Thank you, and appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? I get a motion to close the public hearing. Moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
24-23 is a public hearing regarding the proposed Distillery Tax Increment Financing District.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Klein to just give a quick overview, and then we'll turn it back to the public.
Thank you, Patrick. And the second TIF district that this public hearing is for is what's known as the Distillery TIF district. This is an area I know you're all familiar with, along the Illinois River, between Southwest Washington Street and Southwest Adams Street, from Sanger Street up to the Route 116 Bridge. Again, we surveyed the area. There are 109 parcels in this TIF district, finding that 82.6% of them qualify under the requirements of the Illinois law and the TIF Act, and there are 37 parcels considered vacant, and we found that all of them qualify. Again, the joint review board met on February 1st. The taxing bodies that were present that have a vote, and the vote of the joint review board, which is an advisory vote to this council, was that the area qualifies, the city has followed the procedures to date required under the act, and they recommended approval of the TIF district. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Ms. Joyce Harant speaking at the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, if we could, have a motion to open, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you. Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Please cast your ballots to open. Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Harant?
And Councilmember, my son, he has something that he wants to say regarding the Distillery TIF.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, mayor and council members. I'm here today to speak for all the kids who cannot speak for themselves. Please vote no to any tax dollars going towards any pollution or dangerous pipeline on the south side of Peoria. The kids down there's life is already in danger. Please don't allow anyone to put their lives in any more danger. Thank you, and God bless you all.
He wanted to come, too. I didn't force him. He made me bring him. He said he wanted to come and speak, so I couldn't stop him. I had to bring him, make sure he was looking right for the occasion. But I just want to say that...
Can you identify yourself, Mr.?
I'm Wadham Muhammad, and that's my son, Wadham Muhammad Jr. And I am a longtime resident of the south side of Peoria. It's a food desert down there. Those TIF dollars can definitely go towards like a grocery store or something. The violence, the homicide rate on the south side is through the roof as well. The last thing that the people need on the south side of Peoria is a pipeline that could potentially bust because just the ground shifts, which happened in Satar, Mississippi. The ground shifted, and this pipeline burst, and people up to a mile away just passed out in their cars and is suffering from brain damage to this day. So as far as the Distillery TIF, any tax dollars going towards anything that can pollute or put people's lives in harm's way on the South Side of Peoria, we urge that the mayor and the council members vote no. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in the public hearing regarding the proposed Distillery Tax Increment Financing District?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Ali and council members, administration. I am Martha Ross, and I live at 1018 West RB Garrett Avenue. I've lived there 44 years, ever since I came to Peoria. I've served on many committees, commissions, and the entire time I've lived here, I've been standing for justice, equity, and equality in my neighborhood. I wear many hats. I'm here this evening as president of the South Side Community United for Change, better known as SCUC. This organization on the South Side is made up of neighborhood groups, residents, and other organizations and businesses that seek to improve the quality of life for individuals and families living, working, or just visiting on the South Side. The group was founded in 2013. It is a nonprofit, and it includes households and residents in the 61605 ZIP code. Our purpose is to enhance the livability of the South Side area, educate the residents, and implement sustainable activities and programs that address neighborhood problems and concerns. Thank you to the city manager, Earlwick, Olrich, sorry, and staff for the additions that have been made to the Distillery TIF proposal, and my thanks for the opportunity to discuss the red line edits. The city has taken our input into consideration, and that is appreciated. We do need additional time to get feedback from concerned citizens, and we will supply a written response to the city red line wording as soon as possible. We are asking that the city council, mayor, we would like to defer the planning for March 12th, March 12th's vote on this Distillery TIF to a later date. This needs to be a historical transition to stop doing business as usual to the South Side. Equity and environmental justice must be ensured in this Distillery TIF. We need confidence that TIF funds will not go toward adding new air-water pollutions and other hazards and risks of carbon monoxide to the people who live in that area. We need to be sure that the generations of disparities for residents in the South Side will not continue. In my 44 years in the South Side, I have seen over and over again the impacts of cities' decisions not to invest in the South Side's quality of life. The South Side needs new businesses and industries to help attract new homeowners and end years of disinvestment, discrimination, and pollution impact. This TIF can set a new future for Peoria that has been needed for a very, very long time. Focusing on equity and justice and reducing the United States Environmental Protection Agency environmental justice levels of pollution impact and socioeconomic disparities for the South Side, we will be highly significant, and we will prosper. The time is now for the city leaders to walk the walk that they've been talking for all these years by changing the future of the South Side by doing a 360-degree bold step toward valuing the lives of all citizens of Peoria. Thank you for your time and attention.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Ali and council members and staff. My name is Alicia Granderson, and my address is 1014 West Virginia Avenue. However, I grew up on the South Side as a child, so it is very near and dear to me. I am an elected board member with the Heart of Illinois Group Sierra Club, and I am here tonight to present comments for the group. Sierra Club emphasizes equity, diversity, and inclusiveness, along with addressing a wide range of environmental issues. First, we thank city staff for taking public concerns with the Distillery TIF into consideration. It is clearly essential that the final wording in a TIF must protect South Side residents from more pollution and life and safety risks such as carbon dioxide pipelines or carbon capture and sequestration. Secondly, we urge the city to be sure that the final wording can achieve the results that are needed to protect residents and neighborhoods from decades of higher pollution and levels of injustices based on where people live. We ask you to strengthen your language to be sure that it is possible to award city TIF funds with full considerations for reducing and not adding to pollution. TIF funds must not continue discrimination in quality of life in areas such as 61605 and 61602 ZIP codes. The city of Peoria must be sure that any TIF projects are reviewed considering the findings in the City of Peoria and Peoria County 2022 Annual Report of the Joint Commission on Racial Justice and Equity. Justice delayed is justice denied. Now is the time for Peoria to give development the scrutiny it requires for addressing risk, hazards, and pollution. We ask the city to use TIF funds to reward projects that help quality of life and health and not add to existing inequities for a better future for all residents of Peoria. Thank you very much for your time.
I'm Joyce Blumenschein. I live at 2419 East Peoria, not East Peoria, Peoria, in Peoria here, pardon me. So some photos were at your desk. I took this photo on Sunday at about, going on 2:00, and it was the first I had really noticed of a very dark smoke plume coming from the stacks, the smoke stack at Bio-Urja Plant, and that is the red and white stack on the left corner. And then this view was from the East Peoria side of the river. I had to pick up some things at Office Depot, and they have a parking lot on the south. And so I just pulled in there, zoomed my phone, and it's the best I could take. But I just want to point out, I'm not a scientist, but whatever this is, dark particulates are in there. Something's in there. I'm going to try to find out more and ask Bio-Urja. But we know that decades upon decades of pollution have impacted the life and health of people on the South Side. It exasperates asthma and many health conditions, heart problems. So as many speakers said tonight, we just thank city council, thank Attorney Hayes and Administrator Yurik for their attention to the public's comments and your attention to the comments tonight. And we want to work with you to keep refining this because this is a historic time for the city of Peoria to get things right for equity and justice. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the proposed Distillery TIF district?
Good evening. My name is Steve Fairbanks. I reside at 286 Founda Lake Drive in East Peoria. I'm here tonight as a member of the Faith Coalition for Racial Equity, which was formed in Peoria in 2020 in response to the murder of George Floyd by a Minneapolis police officer. Here is the mission of the coalition. We are a growing coalition of faith communities benefiting from white privilege who advocate dismantling institutional racism and are vocal and visible allies of Black communities in Peoria through joint action. Faith communities represented in the coalition include University United Methodist Church, St. Paul Episcopal Church, the Jewish Federation, Imago Dei Church, Universalist Unitarian Church, First Christian Church. The Faith Coalition for Racial Equity supports additions to the Distillery Tax Increment Finance District Redevelopment Plan. Additions, we believe, promote environmental justice and highlight concerns about carbon pipeline transport. In the event of a carbon pipeline burst, families living on the South Side would be directly affected, and over time, such an event also endangers families living throughout Peoria metro area. Thank you for listening and for including the planned amendments.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the proposed Distillery TIF district?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Reverend Jennifer Innis. I'm the minister with the Universalist Unitarian Church here in Peoria. I'm a resident of Peoria, and I have two children getting a great education in the public school system. I am speaking, if I can get the phone open, I am speaking. I'm also part of the Faith Coalition for Racial Equity, and I am here to support the amendments, the call on the city to reduce the environmental risks to areas such as the South Side and not permit CO2 capture and transport by pipeline or increase pollution levels in EPA permits. I support the amendment, the calls for the city to work with the EJ community of concern on the South Side to enhance the community through the lens of environmental justice and diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. As a person of faith, I recognize the deep systemic hardships of the South Side environmentally, economically, from a racial justice perspective, and so much more. The South Side residents, businesses, and organizations stand firm on the fact that this new TIF does not allow funds to go to the establishment of a CO2 pipeline or any other environmental hazards in the South Side or the surrounding areas. And I'll also offer that as much as Peoria may have deep divisions among economic and racial lines, I tell you, a cloud of CO2 does not care, and a cloud of CO2 that may come from a possible accident can affect all of us. It is not worth the risk. And I also want to encourage the council and all elected leaders and those making decisions to do anything in our power to be thoughtful and mindful about our environmental situation. Reflecting on a day when it is, what, 70-something degrees, and tomorrow we may have a snow day in the schools, makes me very mindful of the fragility of our environment, and we are all called to do better on that count in any way that we can. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. I'm Joyce Herrent, and I'm here as part of the Central Illinois Healthy Community Alliance. I'd like to thank Administrator Yurik and Attorney Hayes for the meeting that we had on Friday regarding the additions that we would like to see regarding the TIF use of funds in terms of CO2 pipeline and EPA increased air or water pollution permits. And, you know, it was a really, I think, a unique opportunity. I think it was a first of its kind kind of opportunity, and so we really do appreciate it, and the efforts that everyone took to pay really close attention to how we can work together to move forward on environmental justice. We, I think, and we think that we can move farther, and that we would appreciate having the opportunity to be able to provide something in written form as response to the red line version, and do sincerely ask that the council defer your vote from the March 12th deadline, or that's actually in the schedule, that you can, if you can defer that. I also have a comment from Doris Coaster. She is not in the community. Can I read that at this? Okay. Assuming I can punch these numbers correctly on my phone. Okay. This is Doris Coaster, and she lives at 1507 South Argo Street in Peoria. As president of Nurish, Inc., and a board member of South Side Citizens Who United Change, I stand against TIF money being used for a CO2 pipeline in Peoria, Illinois. I am dismayed by the backdoor methodology being used to get this information, to get this environmental landline installed in our city as this fight continues. Three things will not change. The CO2 pipeline is a safety hazard for our community. The citizens of Peoria will continue to vocalize rejection of a CO2 pipeline and any other lucrative deal that puts lives at risk. Upon explosion of a CO2 pipeline, we will all have eight seconds. Your job is to represent and uphold the voice of Peoria residents. Doris Coaster. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Gertler. I, too, am a member of the Faith Coalition for Racial Equity, and I don't plan to repeat any of the very wonderful words that have been said tonight about the tax increment, proposed tax increment. I just know that you are and the council are reasonable people, and that you know that the South Side has suffered many injustices over the years, and you've heard much of that tonight, too. So I'm just another person that is telling you it's in our hearts and minds that it's time for environmental justice, human rights, and social equity to be given to the Peoria South Side. So when you begin working again or more on the tax increment, I just want you to remember people live there, people don't need to be polluted anymore, and I ask that you just add to what you are proposing safeguards for all the things that you've heard tonight that can be a problem. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at the public hearing regarding the
Good evening, council, Madam Mayor, city manager, counselor. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I'd like to piggyback on what everyone else was speaking of in regards to environmental justice, the obvious threats to the environment. I understand that maybe once upon a time it was a good idea to consider... I understand that maybe once upon a time it was a good idea to consider capturing carbon and somehow stuffing it into the ground. I don't think anyone ever intended funds to be used to schlep it all over Hell's Half Acre. I think this is an issue that both, that is rare. It unites Democrats, it unites Republicans. Nobody wants this in their backyard, and that's from Iowa all to where, all the way to where they plan on depositing it in Decatur. I would like to second Martha and Joyce's requests and ask that a final decision be put off till March 12th, largely so that more of the public will be able to provide that input, but also so I can show you some really beautiful pictures. I've lived at 331 Fulton Street, across the street for the last 11 years, and I have some beautiful views. On a clear day, I can watch the construction from my bedroom or my living room on the McCluggage Bridge, and I can see the Bernie Baker Bridge out my window as well. One of the prettier things is to watch the fog roll into the river valley. The fog is nice, it's beautiful, but it's water vapor. It ain't gonna kill ya, and it's not displacing any oxygen in the process. I respectfully request that the city use extreme caution to assure that Bio-Urja, who just got a break, we, through American Water, applied for $950,000 in a grant to upgrade water infrastructure, and we paid for a lift station, to which Bio-Urja makes a big contribution. They don't really need any breaks to poison us, and I understand the focus on the South Side and environmental justice for the South Side, but you can smell Bio-Urja on the way over here. It smells very yeasty this evening. That's what vapors tend to do, is they tend to accumulate in our river valley, hence the reason when you see the temperature on the Weather Channel, it's always gonna be five degrees higher right here at City Hall in the river valley. But I would respectfully request that no monies go to this disaster of carbon capture, not just for the sake of the South Side, but because you can see it out my window. There are 200 people who live in my building right behind me, and the people that are outside walking their dogs are the first ones to die. You only get eight seconds. Good luck getting the fire department to fire up trucks and come and save you. Combustible, combustion engines won't kick in to come and get you when we get gassed. And when does the gas leave the river valley? I don't know, maybe when the wind blows. I think that it's a risk that doesn't need incentivizing, and it doesn't better the neighborhood in any way, so I do respectfully request that City Council at least put off a decision until they can obtain more input from the public, but the public doesn't need to incentivize a risk to our lives. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the proposed Distillery TIF District?
My name's Rachel O'Reilly. Thank you for hearing us out. It seems to me that this carbon capturing pipeline is really a loophole. It seems like legislation to cut carbon emissions is because scientists know that climate change is serious, and I just urge all of you to be heroes. Don't go where the money is, be a hero for future generations. Actually, we need radical change, not loopholes shoving carbon somewhere, and the way, the way that the earth is changing, the way that everything's going on, it's very likely it could have a disaster, so please be mindful, please be heroes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Moved by Councilwoman Jackson, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Did you want to, you were just moving, right?
Yes, and I would also like to speak. So I would.
Okay, so we're just receiving public comment.
Okay, we're not taking action.
Right. Not at all.
Okay, we can, I would like to ask to defer.
This is just a public hearing.
Okay.
Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Madam Clerk?
We are at the Consent Agenda. Twenty-four dash forty-four is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to concur with the recommendation of staff to set a public hearing before the City Council on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. regarding citywide sewer rate adjustments. Twenty-four dash forty-five is a communication with request to approve a two-year contract for the 2024 weed and litter contract with Burnside Brothers, JIMAX, Law &amp; Order, and Roberts Custom Mowing as primary contractors, and Chambers &amp; Sons Landscaping and Rutherford Enterprises as secondary contractors. Twenty-four dash forty-six is a communication with request to approve a two-year contract for the 2024 tree trimming and cutting contract with Heinlein Enterprises LLC and JIMAX. Twenty-four dash forty-seven is a communication with request to approve a two-year contract for board-up services with C. Lindsay as the primary contractor and JIMAX as the backup contractor. Twenty-four dash forty-eight is a communication with request to approve a two-year contract for the 2024 exterior rodent control contract with Peoria Pest Eliminators. Twenty-four dash forty-nine is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with request to approve a resolution regarding the approval of closed session minutes. Twenty-four dash fifty is a communication with request for the following. A, approve a highway authority agreement between the City of Peoria and Illico, Inc. for the property known as 3036 North Knoxville Avenue, Peoria, Illinois. And B, adopt an ordinance for a limited area for groundwater for properties known as parcel of West Forest Hill Avenue, East Forest Hill Avenue, and North Knoxville Avenue, all in Peoria, Illinois. Twenty-four dash zero fifty-one is a communication with request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to deny a request to approve the Coligar subdivision with waivers for the properties located at 9310 North Fry Road. Twenty-four dash fifty-two is a communication with request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to deny a request to amend an existing special use ordinance number 13115 as amended in a Class C2 large-scale commercial district for a shopping center to add Class II tobacco or alternative nicotine product sales use for the properties located at 4123 North Sheridan Road, 4125 North Sheridan Road, and 900 West Lake Avenue, Peoria, Illinois. Twenty-four dash fifty-three is a communication with request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending an existing special use ordinance number 13392 in a Class R7 multifamily residential district for an assisted living facility to allow a building addition and parking lot expansion with waivers for the property located at 3415 North Sheridan Road. Twenty-four dash fifty-four is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance making temporary amendments to Chapter 18 to reduce fees and allow additional locations in Article 17 Mobile Food Vehicles and to reduce fees in Article 12 of the Code of the City of Peoria. Twenty-four dash fifty-five is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with request to adopt an ordinance partially abating the tax heretofore levied to pay special service area property taxes on the Holiday Inn Property Tax Special Service Area in the amount of $126,000. And twenty-four dash fifty-six is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to adopt an ordinance partially abating the tax heretofore levied to pay special service area property taxes on the Peoria Sports Center Property Tax Special Service Area in the amount of $117,000, and that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items to remove from consent? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item number twenty-four dash zero five one, please.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Twenty-four dash zero five zero.
Any other items? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash fifty is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request for the following. A, approve a highway authority agreement between the City of Peoria and Illico, Inc. for the property known as 3036 North Knoxville Avenue, Peoria, Illinois. And B, adopt an ordinance for a limited area of groundwater for properties known as parcel identification numbers 14-33-201-1, 14-33-201-2, 14-33-201-3, 14-33-201-4, 14-33-201-5, 14-33-201-12, 14-33-201-13, 14-33-201-14, 14-33-201-15, 14-28-454-22, 14-28-377-066, 14-33-132-18, as well as portions of West Forest Hill Avenue, East Forest Hill Avenue, and North Knoxville Avenue, and we'll need separate motions on each.
Okay, well done, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'd like to apologize to the clerk. Thank you for that clarity. I, and I'd like to speak to, to Manager Ulrich. I went through this, or, I'm sorry, I didn't know you were here, Mr. Director. I guess I'll address my questions to you. I went through this and kind of went through it and went through it, and I have to say I'm not sure I understand what's going on. I don't think I have any objection, but I'm not exactly sure what's happening. And let me just try to simplify it for myself. Is this a, there have been core drilling, core samples and whatnot taken, and am I correct in that there are some dangerous chemicals there, but they're, they are so rare in the sample that it's underneath the limits where we would have to do remediation? Is that, is that fair?
Fair. That's correct. And the remediation, it's basically, it would offer, you would have to do remediation if they proposed using it for potable water.
I'm sorry, would you say that again?
They proposed using the site to extract potable water drinking.
Oh, yes, yes.
So if it were that, if that were the case, it would be above that level. That's basically in the, I'll try to make this simple. This simply restricts the use of that parcel for development, and they cannot use or extract potable water. They can develop, but they cannot extract water and use it for potable means. That, in essence, is what this restriction creates.
And that seems to me to be not much of a restriction.
Pretty standard, actually. Correct. It would just, it restricts them for use, for that use.
Thank, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Sorry for my thickness. Madam Mayor, I would move to approve item A.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Any discussion on item A? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Kelly?
Without detailing item B.
Come on, come on.
I would move to approve item B.
Seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash fifty-one is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to deny a request to approve the Coligar subdivision with waivers for the properties located at 9310 North Fry Road, Peoria, Illinois.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to defer four weeks until the March 26th meeting, please.
Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at presentations. Twenty-four dash fifty-seven is a communication from the City Manager and Chief Diversity and Inclusion Officer with request to receive and file a presentation on minority and women-owned business utilization and minority and women workforce data, and on your desk there is a handout with a revised presentation for tonight.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have with us this evening, we have our Chief Diversity and Inclusion Officer, Melody Green, who's gonna walk through a presentation. At the request of Councilwoman Jackson, she'd asked to, for some historical information, and we have some other information that we'd like to share this evening. Hopefully, we're able to get that up on the screen. There we go.
Yes. Yes. Yes, we can, we can now.
So tonight I'll be, I'll be showing a presentation regarding our minority business enterprises, our women business enterprises, our individual minority and women workforce utilization. I will also address some common barriers that women and minorities face in the construction field in general, and I will close out with some of the positive actions that we as an organization are taking to do our part. I recognize that these are very data-heavy slides, and so for timing's sake, I won't make a reference to all of the data, but you have it there in your hard copies at your desks. Most of this data has been provided by Human Capital Development LLC, which manages our construction and procurement data for the public works and purchasing departments through ePrism Soft. One slide detailing our capital spend data was provided by our finance department, and I will make reference to that slide when we come to it later. The next three slides will give a summary of our workforce participation, our minority business enterprise utilization, and our women business enterprise utilization. business enterprise utilization, and our women business enterprise utilization over a ten-year period. On all three slides, you will see our aspirational goals, which are set by the City Manager pursuant to Chapter seventeen, Section one-twenty of our city code. On the current slide, you see that for contracts and subcontracts, our goals are currently set at ten percent for minority business enterprises and five percent for women business enterprises. Additionally, for our workforce goals, we're set at minority, eighteen percent workforce, and three percent women workforce goals. So with this slide, we see that of the total number of workforce hours in the construction field between twenty-fourteen and twenty-twenty-three, women accounted for nearly five percent and minorities nearly nineteen percent. What this means is that the workforce goals have been met on the aggregate over that period of time. We'll see later in the breakdown that these numbers, numbers, however, do vary year over This next slide lists the same goals for workforce and additionally for contracts and subcontracts. Goals applicable to this slide are, again, ten percent for minority business enterprises and five percent for women business enterprises on prime contracts. Now, a prime contractor, sometimes also called a general contractor for the public, they're responsible for work on an entire project, so they work consistently on that project for its duration. However, they hire and lead other contractors on smaller portions of the contracts, and those contractors are known as subcontractors. So per this slide, for these prime contracts over the ten-year period, we see that our goals have gone unmet. We are at point-six-zero percent for minority business enterprise participation on prime contracts, and two-point-two-zero percent for participation on prime contracts for women business enterprises over that same period of time. Let me make sure I didn't get ahead of myself. Okay, thank you. And so, the next slide, Slide four, details our subcontract participation data for the same ten-year period. Our goals remain the same as those for the prime contracts, ten percent MBE, five percent WBE, and again, they've gone unmet on the aggregate with one-point-three-four percent for minority business enterprise participation and four-point-two-six percent for women Slide five details a breakdown of those same prime contracts, but for the years of twenty-fourteen through twenty-eighteen. Of note, we can see that from twenty-fifteen to twenty-eighteen, no minority business enterprises were awarded any prime contracts. Now, we don't know at this time if they bid on any prime contracts, but we do know, based on this data, that they were not awarded any prime contracts during that timeframe. And the same goes for women business enterprises from twenty-sixteen and twenty-seventeen. We then see a jump in the area of women business enterprises to seven-point-two percent on prime contracts, which would exceed the five percent goal for women business enterprises. Next slide is a continuation of the previous slide, but for the years of twenty-nineteen through twenty-twenty-three. Here we see that minority business enterprises continue to obtain zero percent of prime This slide is a visual representation of just how much of the pie minority and women-owned businesses are not getting on prime contracts for the ten-year period. And again, we see that minority business enterprises are less than one percent over that aggregate period of time, and women business enterprises are just over two percent. Slide eight details subcontractor utilization for the time period of twenty-fourteen to twenty-eighteen. Here we can see that there are no zero percentages like we saw on those for major prime contracts. We also see that women business enterprises exceeded the five percent goals twice during this five-year time period. Minority business enterprises did not meet the ten percent goal during this same timeframe. For the years of twenty-nineteen through twenty-twenty-three, this is a continuation, again, of the previous slide, and we can see that minority business enterprises appear to not have been awarded any subcontracts during the years of twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty. Women business enterprises met the five percent utilization goal in twenty-nineteen and then And here we have another visual representation of the pie chart, this time for subcontracts, which show minority business enterprises, again, at one-point-three-four percent and women business enterprises at four-point-two-six percent in subcontracts. Slide eleven details our workforce data. Recall that our workforce data goals of eighteen percent for minorities and three percent for women on the aggregate had been met for that ten-year period. Here we can look more closely and see that women met the three percent goal every year between twenty-fourteen and twenty-eighteen, and minorities met the goal in twenty-fourteen and came close again in twenty-seventeen. Slide twelve is a continuation of Slide eleven, but for the years of, I'm sorry, twenty-nineteen through twenty-twenty-three. We have similar data here, but here, women in the construction workforce appear to have decreased a bit between the years of twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-three. And minorities increased, with the highest of all years being the year twenty-twenty-three Slide thirteen is the last of the pie charts, and it details construction workforce data showing, again, that eighteen-point-five-four percent for minorities and four-point-seven-eight percent for women in the field of workforce. Slide fourteen details data provided by the Finance Department, and that data shows that minority and women business enterprises spend on capital projects. Capital projects are larger projects that typically aim to improve infrastructure in some way. We do not currently have goals related to capital spend projects specifically. However, we can see here that the last year, that last year for both groups, we are trending upwards in a positive direction with four-point-six percent of our total spend going towards MBEs and three-point-zero-five percent of our total spend going to min, to women business enterprises. And if you take a look at the year twenty-eighteen, you can see that that's a drastic difference from twenty-eighteen, when minority business enterprises had point-one-six percent and I include a slide, Slide fifteen because it details a snapshot of United States construction employment by race. This data comes from the U.S. Bureau of the Labor Statistics, and it's just one example of barriers that some minority communities face, which is simply entering the field of construction. We see here that of the races and/or ethnicities listed, sixty-point-nine percent of the construction sector is comprised of non-Hispanic whites. On the contrary, the percentages for blacks and Asians are drastically lower. To demonstrate just how deeply rooted and systemic these barriers are, in nineteen-ninety-nine, the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights wrote an article addressing barriers facing minority and women-owned businesses in the field of construction. That report cited some common barriers as difficulty gaining access to necessary information and capital, a lack of collateral, personal expenses needing to be used in lieu of financing capabilities, limited buying power, which limits volume, which in turn limits best pricing from suppliers, which in turn can lead to higher pricing, which in turn deems minority firms less competitive. Also listed as barriers were limited job training opportunities, bonding requirements for smaller businesses, false claims of minority and women business enterprise solicitation, and apprenticeship program requirements. Lastly listed were problems associated with completing municipal contracts, amongst other problems. Nineteen-ninety-nine was twenty-five years ago, and these barriers remain. But as strong as these barriers are, we are proving that we too, as an organization and a community, are strong enough to work against them. So what are we doing? We all have a part to play. And so, for example, first, you as our leaders, you've shown support by approving staff recommendations to award grant money to organizations like the minority contractors that seek to address these barriers by providing minorities with pathways to construction and other trades. Internally, you all have approved the Peoria Equity and Accountability Program for my office to run, and in doing so, we've added nearly one-hundred minority and women business enterprise listings and growing every day in the field of construction, food service, consulting services, and other areas. We've also continued and increased community engagements, and some have listed here, Financial Literacy Forum with St. Paul Church, and Chase Bank Community Management Department. We've attended minority business days and Hispanic Chamber of Commerce minority and women business enterprise events. Very importantly, internally, we are reviewing our processes that we follow as we practice our jobs day-to-day, and in doing so, we are reviewing our pre-bidding processes so that the Equal Opportunity Office can have a more visible role in those processes. We are going through strenuous good faith efforts review of minority and women business enterprise utilization when documents are reviewed from divisions such as the Public Works Department and Purchasing Departments that handle the majority of our large contracts. We are also engaging in procurement equity training across our organization with all levels of staff, and we'll begin that training next week. One of the most exciting things that we are working on in conjunction with the Finance Department and our procurement equity team that I'll speak about on the next slide is this transparency dashboard. This dashboard will allow for real-time public access to minority and women business enterprise information, and it'll increase visibility for businesses. It'll help us identify trends and inform our decision-making so that we can be more intentional. It'll foster trust and accountability and further our strategic plan goal to embrace diversity, equity, and inclusion. The last slide details a procurement equity working group established in twenty-twenty-three by Mayor Ali. You can see our partner organizations that I've listed here, the NAACP Peoria Branch, Minority Business Development Center, Bradley University Small Business Development Center, and many others that you see listed here. We have at least monthly group meetings, and we work to develop ways to increase minority and women utilization, not just in the field of construction, but across our organization as a whole, and I believe that our staff and our department heads have bought into On March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, the Procurement Equity Group will host the Equity and Procurement Expo. That'll be held at the Peoria Civic Center. It will allow attendees to learn about the city's procurement processes and meet with other government agencies that may have procurement opportunities available. We'll have presentations from the State of Illinois Commission on Equity and Inclusion and their, their business enterprise program. Also presentations from the Minority Business Development Center and Bradley University Small Business Development Center. The invitations for that vent, for that event are circulating now, and we are expecting a great success. With that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief Green, for this presentation. Excellent job, and I do have a couple questions for starters.
Okay.
The data is compelling, very compelling. Mine are not numbered, so I'm just gonna go through and count one, two, three, four, Slide four, if you could go back to that?
Okay. Actually, let me see if I. Is it this slide?
Another one, five. Yes. You indicated that those numbers were from twenty-fourteen to twenty-eighteen for MBEs. Well, twenty-fifteen to twenty-eighteen were all zeros for the MBEs, but you indicated that you are not sure if MBEs had actually bid on the projects. Aren't we able to go back and find that information out? Didn't we have a, or did we not have a system that allows us to go back and look to see whether there were bids?
I am not sure at this time. I can check with, actually, Mr. Zaja is here, he maintains our data. He may be able to pull that information, and I could report that back to council, but at this time, this is the way that the data was submitted, so I am not able to confidently say that we even had minorities, minority business enterprises bid on prime contracts. And that is not a rarity with prime contracts, because those are larger contracts, they require much more capital, and much more in, in terms of bonding requirements and other things that smaller minority and women-owned businesses often lack access to.
I totally agree, but if there's any way to determine whether minorities actually bid in, from twenty-fifteen through twenty-eighteen, I would sure like to know.
Absolutely.
And then, the only other question I have is on Slide, let's see, that's, that's Slide nine, actually, I have two more questions. That one right there. Just want to verify that twenty-twenty-two for MBEs is five thousand dollars.
That is correct, Mayor Ali, and I did double-check that number because I too- That is correct, Mayor Ali. And I did double-check that number because I too was wondering what had occurred.
Okay.
And I actually was able to find out from our consultant that that was a contract. I'll tell you in one second. And I apologize. I think I left that last document in my office, so I don't have it here. But that was one contract that was awarded for that $5,000 amount. And I can report back to that as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I don't know the number, but if you could advance maybe about four more slides. I'm sorry. It's called Total Procurement Amount and Capital Spend. And it is that one. At the very top, the third column over, is, should that be MBE versus MWBE?
Absolutely, Mayor Ali. That is a typo. It should just be MBE percentage of spend. Because the next column is WBE percentage of spend.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. There's several questions from council. We'll start with Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Chief Green, for the very detailed presentation this evening. The data was very sobering, but I think it's very important that we have a baseline. You have to know where we came from to know where we want to go. I appreciate the intentionality from your office and the collaboration between the various departments as well, too, that are going to help us move in the right direction. We have some growth opportunities, obviously, too, but I think one thing I appreciate about our city is that we are not running away from these issues. We are owning it. We're looking at the data, and then you all are implementing actions to improve it. So I definitely appreciate that. Just two questions for you, though. In your time in this space, when you're interacting with minority women-owned businesses and disadvantaged business owners, et cetera, what are some common barriers they're saying to you when you're having conversations to them when it comes to point of entry and participating with the City of Peoria?
You know, the barriers that I've heard are no different than the barriers listed in that civil rights report that I referenced earlier. And in fact, the Procurement Equity Group has met with other jurisdictions that have also expressed similar barriers. And so those barriers include access to resources, access to capital, perceived legendary contracts or actual legendary contracts. You know, a lot of times when businesses come in and want to bid on contracts, they are intimidated because of the process that has taken place for so long that they have not been privy to. And so that is, in itself, can act as a barrier to gaining access to the city organization and other organizations as well.
No, thank you. And then another question, and you referenced the PAP program that you launched out of your office last year as a tool in our toolkit to try to get more participation. Can you maybe share a success story of a business that is participating in that, please?
Sure. The PAP program is a success story all around, and I will share an individual success story that I believe to be relevant. But overall, I would say that across our organization, each department has really taken a hold of PAP's purpose. I have received calls from the Code Department, Public Works, the Clerk's Office, and almost every other office about ways that they can utilize that PAP list, or businesses that I might know of that can provide any service, large or small, to that particular department. And overall, I think that is what's necessary, because ultimately, our policies and our procedures and the way that we, with the power, move is the thing that will move these numbers. But also, to answer your question specifically, Councilman, one thing that I can think of is for this upcoming Procurement Equity Expo, one of the vendors that we'll be using is ShePop. ShePop has also been utilized for other city events, including "We Love the South Side." And so we're excited to be able to say that she is listed as a PAP member. We have utilized that list and pulled her off of it. And we've also used other minority vendors for other portions of the Procurement Equity Expo. And so this is an intentional action by this group, and I see intentional actions across this organization. So I'm confident that we will improve these numbers.
No, that's great. Thank you for sharing, Chief Green, and thank you so much again for the work in this. And if we have an economy that everyone could participate in, that is a tide that raises all boats. So again, I commend your efforts. Thank you, Mayor Ali, for launching that committee to look over this as well, too. And I look forward to the event at the end of the month. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief Green, for this informative information that I found enlightening and also disheartening. But we have to look at it. We can't fix what we want to acknowledge. But I had a couple of questions. One is very similar to the question that Dr. Ali asked, and it was regarding the businesses that did not, their bid was not accepted. What was the follow-up process then or even now? Is there a process that they get informed on, or there's some assistance in moving forward?
Well, I wasn't here at that time, so I can't speak to that. But what I will say is that that is a perfect question, because those are the things that we are working on internally now. I think the second-to-last slide detailed how we are operationalizing equity. And some of the important things that we are doing are looking at our processes from start to finish. And one of the things that we would like to be able to do is to grab a hold of these contractors who are not awarded bids and go through and try to determine how we can be an asset to help them as they proceed next time. I know something similar that the Police Department has done is with their grant-writing workshops. And I found that to be something powerful for grantees who did not win awards at that time. And we've seen them come back later and then be awarded contracts. And I think that we can achieve the same thing here in this area if we're intentional about doing so.
Totally agree. I was wondering if, although you weren't in position during those years, if perhaps you could obtain that data and maybe reach out to some of those organizations if they're still, you know, operating. Some people get, you know, discouraged, and they may still do the work or be able to do the work, but it's just to say, we see you. We want to include you. And then one more, one more comment or question. Regarding the monthly group meetings and also marketing this wonderful collaboration, how are we reaching organizations or companies or even individuals to let them know that this is available?
We are engaged in intense team efforts to spread the word. So the PAP listees have already received notification and invitation, and we've started to see those registrations come through. But our partner agencies, some of which are in the audience here today, also have listings and resources that they have sent the invitation out to, or that they will be sending the invitation out to. So the Illinois State Black Chamber and the NAACP and Bradley Small Business Development Center has a vast listing. All of those listings will be receiving notification of this event if they have not already, and then we will just continue to market the event that way.
Thank you, Chief Green, and thank you for all that you do. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. And council is encouraged to come out.
Absolutely. Please do.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much, Chief Green. This was a very extensive report, and it certainly, well, it didn't surprise me, but it does at least acknowledge that we have some work to do and we're willing to do what we can to try and level the playing field. I had just a couple of questions, and I don't know if you have the data. One refers to the chart talking about workforce hours at 24.19% for minorities. Do we know what those jobs entail? Are they primarily subcontractors, trucking? Do we know any of that information at all? I'm just kind of curious. Yet, we saw progress, but it would be interesting to know what types of jobs.
Okay. Again, I can try to go back and flesh out some of the data, but I can say that they would not be subcontracting jobs, because this is workforce data. So workforce data is strictly individuals working in the field. Subcontractors would be classified under the chart that was titled subcontract. So this is just to be thought of as individuals in the workforce for which we have an 18% goal. Here, it's 24.19% in 2023.
Okay. So that could include anything from companies like Burnside Brothers? Is that what you're saying? No, or what?
If Burnside Brothers, Burnside Brothers would be a contractor.
Okay.
So they would not be, Mr. Manager.
What we're talking about here, these would be skilled trades workers. So these are people that are working either as laborers, as teamsters.
Oh.
So these are the skilled construction trades that we're talking about here. So that's the workforce data.
Okay, all right. Well, that gives me some...
...workers, bricklayers.
Okay. My other question was with regards to, you know, I hear a lot about the fact that when the city notices or sends out notices for bids, the law stipulates it always is the lower, lowest bid. And oftentimes, minorities aren't in a position to outbid the lowest bidder. Are we in a position to do anything with regards to impacting, changing the law?
Well, I'd like to not, I am an attorney, but I do not want to step on our legal counsel or our city manager here. But I do think that there are things that could be addressed.
We're looking at some options that we can bring back to you as some suggestions within the purchasing ordinance. We don't have it completely fleshed out right now that we could say what they are, but we're looking at whether it's an incentive structure or looking at ways that we can do that. We have, for example, we do have a clause in our purchasing ordinance that says that if you're a Peoria-based business and you're within a certain percentage of the low bid, we can select you over the next bidder if they're not from the City of Peoria. So we're looking at what options we have there, try and make some revisions to the purchasing ordinance back to you, probably in the next month or two with some of those suggested changes.
The other question I was thinking about, a lot of times, people in trades, I know I had a brother who was a journeyman, made good money. A lot of times, he, when he started out here in Peoria, he always got laid off in the wintertime. And he and his buddies traveled all over the country getting good jobs. And the question I had that came to mind was, do we advertise all across the country, or do we limit ourselves to just Illinois when we're looking for minorities? Because sometimes, when you're just talking about a certain geographical area and/or region or city, it really does limit you in terms of the pool of individuals that you can choose from. And, you know, sometimes you hear, well, we want to always go local. But if the pool, local pool, is small and doesn't contain enough, is the city ever in the business of advertising around the state, around the Midwest, to, in an effort to give those minorities, subcontractors an opportunity to bid on some of these jobs locally?
What I can say is that, for example, the PAP list, it is a publicly open list. It's open to any minority in any area of this country. And we did that strategically for that reason, so that we can consider minorities wherever they are if we have to. We know that we have to be intentional in doing that, and a lot of times, it is, as you said, the particular businesses that we may need to utilize just aren't here at that time. And so we may need to look out further. So that is something that, you know, my office and I believe the city manager is in support of when we need to be. With regards to advertising, I think that the Purchasing Department would be better suited to respond to that, or the Public Works Department, as they are the ones who facilitate bid documents being circulated. Sorry, Kyle.
In terms of our solicitations that we do, a lot of those go through a software called BidNet that we have at the city. Those have the opportunity to be broadcast locally, nationally. We also are intentional in ensuring that we are sending those out to the registered MWBEs in their system to try to increase those participation rates.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Director Green. Chief Green?
Thank you.
A few more council members that want to speak to this. I just wanted to thank Director Kyle Craddy for, he and his team led that effort to build that transparency dashboard system that all of us have access to. And maybe we need some instructions on how council is able to get to that information, because it's at our fingertips now. We can go in any day and access that information.
It will be live shortly.
Oh, it's not live yet?
When I put dashboards live, it's two things I always want to make sure, is the consistency of the data, which we've met. And I like to make sure we have a limited amount of human input into it, so it just maintains itself. That is the piece we are finalizing. So I anticipate by the end of the, by the next couple of weeks, we'll be finalizing online with it. And you'll be able to go back and look at multi-years worth of data. The one distinction with this and this conversation is this is total spend for the city. So this is not just on capital projects. This is total spend. It did take us a while to get through, because we had to go through our entire vendor database and mark vendors as whether or not they were procurement or not. Getting energy through Ameren is not really a procurement, so we need to ensure that our numbers are accurate from that purpose. That took us a while to get through, but we will be live shortly. I just wanted to make sure it was something that would just consistently continue to work and everyone would have it at their fingertips.
Okay. Whenever we're ready to go live, if you can send out some instructions.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, that'd be great. Councilmember Reaganbuck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Chief Green. This is really critical information for us to have. I'm, I think I can speak for many of us council members that when we set goals and these metrics that we're striving for, to fall that far short is a real wake-up call for us. So this isn't the information I think any of us like to see, but it's the information we need to see. So thank you for presenting it in such an understandable format. If I could start off with a question, and I think Director Craddy kind of alluded to that. Looking under things like, under the prime contract slide, I think that's maybe number four, it has the contract value, a dollar amount, and then the percentages to MBEs and WBEs. Did I understand him to say that's the total spend? So that's not... My question was going to be, can you tell me, for instance, in 2014, that $9,450,000, how many contracts that represented? I don't expect you to know that off the top of your head, but I think it would be helpful to know that all those goose eggs make me very uncomfortable. Let's be clear about that. But is that a half dozen contracts? Is that 20 contracts? Is it one or two contracts? So that would just be kind of, help put it in a little bit of context, I think, that could be useful for us as well.
Okay.
And if that's way beyond the information that you have historically, I understand, but...
I'll do my best.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
But looking at all those zeros up there and hearing the discussion that's taking place here, I was very relieved to turn to the last page to see some actual action items that are addressing this head-on. I guess my question for you now, in your role, and you're showing the value of your role more and more as we go through this presentation, what else, what, in your perfect world, what do you have us do? What is it that we, as the policymakers, can help empower? is it that we, as the policymakers, can, can help empower you? Or how can we, how can we be intentional so that those goals become more real, more likely to be fulfilled instead of just have disappointing numbers again in five years?
In my perfect world, we would go back as staff and bring those options to you that the city manager mentioned earlier. We'd like to bring back purchasing ordinance amendments. Our purchasing ordinance is very old and in need of amendments. We could include amendments that would be beneficial to the PAP business list, and it would also... Thank you. And it would also allow us to make headway in terms of the progress that we're trying to make. We also have things like the incentives that we're looking at. City manager mentioned the local incentives that are in place now. City council as a body would have had to approve those. And so when we come back to you and ask you to approve those for this purpose, we would just ask that you find the importance in this purpose as well. Things like that are the ways that we can make true change. I can review good faith efforts all day long, but if I never get the contracts to begin with to review, then they'll never be there. If the barriers are never removed, then minority contractors and women-owned businesses and small-owned businesses will never have the sustainability that they need to be competitive. And so that's what I would ask Councilmember Reganbuck. When we do come back with proposed ideas, please have an open mind and know that we are doing this for, just as worthy a purpose as the other reasons, such as the local incentives that are offered.
Looking at the, the progress in the recent years here, and it's still, like, you, you alluded to that at the beginning of your presentation, how it's really ups and downs. And I, I don't think any of us are satisfied with it being that far off the goals, but do you have confidence that we're on the right track and that the efforts being made are more likely to get us to our goals than previously?
I have absolute confidence, and that is because of the organization and the staff that I work with. I see the intentionality behind really trying to get behind this minority and, minority and women business utilization and to support the minority and women workforce. So I do have absolute confidence in our, in our internal organization, and I have confidence that you all will support us if we come to you asking for what we need.
Thank you very much. And I think the takeaway word for me tonight is going to be intentionality. So thank you for the data. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I echo the comments. I think that we've all, we've all been saying, we see a lot of zeros, we see a lot of 0.8s, a lot of 1.1.8s. And I mean, that's, that's embarrassing for us. I am glad that we're advertising a wider array, but I, I do want to see, you know, a larger breakdown of the bids that we receive and, because it seems like we, we keep seeing the same firms over and over again. And I'm sure they do a great job, but, you know, if we're just told as a council that this is the lowest bid, please accept it, I think that's incomplete information going forward. Obviously, you know, there's, there's a long, long list of reasons why we're in this situation going back a long time. And it's probably going to take a little, it's going to take intentionality and a lot of effort to, to get us out. So I, I mean, you mentioned grants, you mentioned, you know, financing. We've been helping because, you know, minority and women-owned businesses might not have the same access to financing, you know, as other, as other firms. We, we still have that going on though, right? We're still offering, offering grants for these, for these firms, right?
I don't know. I can't, my office does not have, you know, grant management at this time. I will say that the grant that I mentioned, I did sit on that evaluation panel, and so that's why I thought it, it important to mention the minority contractors. They are recipients who are exactly on point with what we need to achieve some of the, these goals that we are attempting to achieve. But I think that going forward, you know, wherever there are grant opportunities available to make impact here, we'd be happy to look at doing that. I think that is really the only way that we can get to some of the root barriers that exist. And unless we do that, like I said before, we won't see the businesses even come to the city with the capability to compete for these contracts.
So, Councilman, if I could add, we have provided a significant amount of our American Rescue Plan funds in economic development towards small business development, and we've had grant programs there. The, the majority of those funds have gone to minority-owned businesses over the last couple of years. But there's a difference between this slide that's prime contractors, where you're talking about businesses that not only have to be in the construction trades, but they have to be certified to have a certified apprenticeship program based on our requirements that we have. So they have to have employees that have gone through the apprenticeship programs that are certified by the state of Illinois or the, the state's Department of Labor in order to be able to get a prime contract in this. So there has to be vendors out there that meet those requirements. I mean, prime contracts, right? We're talking about road projects, we're talking about sewer projects, we're talking about large-scale capital projects that need, you need to have that kind of skill set. There are other projects and other, other areas where we talked at the end of this presentation, that goes to other items where we may be doing other work in the city that, that Finance Director Craddy is trying to calculate what that total spend is, that may not require those, those specific requirements that we have for construction jobs.
Okay. So, I mean, it sounds, it sounds like there's, there's a licensing problem, is what it sounds like. It, it sounds like that might be the issue. Is there any way we could, you know, help people get licenses? Maybe, maybe help seminars, you know, so that people could actually get these to be able to then bid?
That's actually the intent of what we're trying to do with the, the Equity and Procurement seminar that we're going to have on March 28th. We're going to bring in representatives from the state of Illinois to talk to attendees about how you can get certified as a minority business through the state, which is really important to have that designation. We're going to have representatives of the Small Business Development Center and the Minority Business Development Center there, representatives of the Chamber of Commerce, the Black Chamber of Commerce as well, to talk about how they can do business. And then we're going to have other public bodies at that event so that we can talk about how they can do business with others in the community, whether that be the county, whether that be the, the city link, whether that be the school district or the park district. So we're going to look at a, a kind of a broader swath in order to, to use that as an opportunity to network as well.
Okay. I appreciate that. That actually sounds encouraging.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. I don't see any more questions, Chief Green, so we thank you very much for your hard efforts and your presentation. It's very informative.
Thank you very much.
Can I get a motion to receive and file? Okay. Moved by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilmember Allen. If there's no questions, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at first readings. Twenty-four dash fifty-eight is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to receive and file the first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code relating to short-term rentals.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you. I'm going to ask Assistant Community Development Director Leah Allison to come forward and just kind of walk through the changes that are here in this first reading of the, the changes to the Unified Development Code.
There we go.
Very much. So this is just bringing back to you the direction you provided to us with regard to short-term rentals and some additional regulations or changes to regulations that are in place. So the first change is to reduce the cap that currently is at 3% down to 1%, and then to increase the radius of that measured area from half, a quarter acre to half, quarter mile to half mile. And the third change is to add a separation requirement of 1,500 feet to short-term rentals, all that are through the special use approval process. So just as a reminder, the special use short-term rental is when the owner does not occupy the property while the short-term rental is, is rented, while the property is rented. The owner leaves the premise. That requires the special use approval, and that's what these changes would be applicable to. Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval. We actually had two neighborhood or citizens express support at that commission meeting for these changes. So hopefully this just reflects the direction that you gave us. And if you, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Councilmember Grant?
Move to receive and file, as Helen.
Seconded by Councilmember Valpula. Further discussion, Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to congratulate Ms. Allison and the staff and Joe Doolin for great, great, great job, job well done, and discussion's been great. Moving forward, I just want to kind of plant a seed after an incident that I'm aware of that happened not too long ago. The definition of short-term rental, rental, as my understanding anyways, 30 days or less. Is that the only part of the definition?
Yes. So we have a, a short-term rental versus a traditional long-term rental, and the 30-day is the, is the tipping point for that.
It's a different definition, okay. So I'd like for my colleagues and your staff to, maybe in the future, to think about making, having a minimum number of nights. For me, if you only rent one night, I think, I think you're asking for more trouble than if you're asking or renting your property for maybe two or three nights. So I just want to plant a seed there. I don't know if it's a good idea or not, but I know in the past, some of the troubles we ran into were people that rented for one night. So just want to plant that seed with my colleagues tonight. Thank you very much for the job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Grant? Was that accident, wasn't it?
Well, not to be, at a loss for words. I want you to know I'm, I'm healthy. You know, I think this is one of those issues that has changed us as a council, as we've gotten more and more feedback from the citizens we represent. And I think it's always encouraging to see the council respond to positions maybe they had taken in the past to actually altering those positions and embracing what the constituents are asking for. Some of us in the beginning thought our fractions were too large. And so what we're trying to do is roll back the increasing commercialization of our neighborhoods. We've been listening to our constituents. The Wertham case, Council Hayes helps provide a firm foundation for what we are doing as a city as relates to regulating these and also addressing disruptive conduct that is occurring at short-term rentals in our city. Would you like to elaborate a little bit on Wertham?
Thank you, Councilman. The item B is addressing this very directly. My staff work hard to come up with ways to strengthen our ability to respond to disruptive behavior at short-term rental units. And so the whole set of issues in item B is meant to complement and allow the enforcement of the slightly more restrictive, you know, use permissions, permissions that'll be granted or considered by the council and give us the ability to respond more directly if there is a disruptive event related to those. So that, there is, I think, of the two different packages of coordination between them to work together to be able to be more responsive when everybody's convinced we need to do something about that event. That said, I think it is helpful to understand, there's a lot of this activity going on without any incident. And so there's been some voice to where we're at. I took some comfort when I talked to Leah today about what was the traffic at our hearing. After all the discussions we had here, we had a Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, and there were two citizens who showed up to speak in favor. No industry participants showed up to object, nor have they directly or indirectly articulated any objections to what we're trying to do here. I think the responsible folks in industry look at this as healthy for them as well as for our community. So when the Airbnbs and Vrbo's and other places are operating well, I think it adds to our whole community and tourism and that type of thing. So I think we're headed in the right-
Yes. And, and we don't want to paint with too broad a brush, as you say, the responsible short-term rental entrepreneurs certainly do not appreciate some of the activities that occur at poorly regulated ones. So I think, I think we, I think we probably hit on the sweet spot, but like anything, times change, values change. But I think this is the way to go. Now, I know my fellow councilman, Tim Reganbuck, suggested that maybe we consider going forward, no short-term rentals in residential communities, R1 to R4. I'm not here tonight to push that. I think that we need to have a lot of thought going into that. But I think there's been a reaction to folks going in, creating a development of some sort with unclean hands, and then coming after they are detected doing this to us, telling us, oh, please give us a permit, you know, we didn't mean to break the law, and so on and so forth. It just is unseemly. And we've had way too many cases of that, in my opinion, and very prominent cases where it just shouldn't happen. If people come to us with unclean hands, asking for us to bless their operation when they've been sneaking it in, I say no, because it reflects on the fitness of the applicant, the character of the applicant. So I commend the council for making these adjustments. It's never the last word. We may choose to make other adjustments down the road. And I, I thank you, Councilman Reganbuck, for your thinking about this. This may be something we can contemplate as well. But tonight, what we're asked to do is to receive and file the first reading of this ordinance.
Yes. Thank you. That was pretty good for accidental button.
Once in a while, have a good night.
Councilmember Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know if this is the time to ask, but I will. Several weeks ago, I asked about having short-term rental addresses listed in the CAT system. Is that something that has already taken place? Has there been communication or even more work in that area?
So yes, we have started that conversation. We're keeping the list, and then we are working to get that to the system that you mentioned last time. It hasn't happened yet, but we are in the works of, of trying to make that happen.
Okay. Any proposed timeline?
Gosh, I don't, I, I don't have one just yet. Apologize.
Okay. Just something to consider during this, this time period. The main reason is for emergency purposes. So if there is some emergency fire or any, you know, emergency or significant event, homeowners can be notified. So, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes. Good point. Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I need to be brought up to date just a little bit. When people set up short-term rentals in the city before we began to regulate them, I think I remember a number of like 90 or something that we were aware of, 90, short-term rentals. Is that, or do you recall?
I'm not recalling the exact number. There were quite a few that did operate before we had any regulations, correct?
Yes, okay. And if I'm not mistaken, most of those have gotten in line to be approved. Is that correct? So I think they're operating in, seems to me they're operating in good faith, and we're handling them at, you know, three at a time or whatever, whatever it is. If all of those were approved, would those approvals violate this prospective ordinance?
So yes, there are some currently approved short-term rentals that will not comply with these regulations, and they'll-
I'm sorry. That was my next question. But the question I have is if all these that are waiting in line were approved, okay, who have been operating already, would, I guess you sort of answered it anyway, would they end up being in violation of this new ordinance?
There are some that will be, but they will be allowed to operate until effectively their license or approval becomes null and void, and that can occur with a change in So if there's any change where the approval is terminated, any new application would have to comply with these new regulations.
Okay, so those who were operating and who are in line, because they were operating, we might say that some of them who might look like they're in violation would be grandfathered under this ordinance?
If they're compliant with the current regulations before this change, they'll allow to remain until there's a change that would cause them to have to be a re-applicant, then these regulations would be applicable.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Assistant Director Allison. We have a motion to receive and file. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash fifty-nine is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with a request to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance modifying the license regulations for short-term rentals.
Council Hayes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I mentioned earlier, this misspoke, I thought it was an AB, it's not, but this item is the modifications to our penalty sections that allow us to move more quickly when there's a violation of our ordinances. There's an improvement or an increase of the fines. Gives us the ability for, to have the discretion on a single violation of disruptive behavior to revoke the special permit and/or the license, and puts us in a position to protect the public from any sort of repeated action. I think it'll drive some compliance and some better management amongst the more responsible operators as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to receive and file.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Kelly?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, that's what I was up to-
Oh, okay, very good.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Grayatt?
I'm sorry, Corporation Council Hayes, could you repeat your explanation of that? I didn't understand it.
So the penalty sections-
Yes.
And the ability to respond quickly to violations, those sections of, the prior sections of the code were much more liberal, required multiple violations over a limited period of time. These changes primarily give staff the flexibility to seek to revoke permits and/or licenses if there's an egregious event. And so it'll put the industry on notice that you've got to responsibly manage these properties in order to maintain the privilege of use by special use as well as the privilege of use by license.
So this is kind of the penalty box aspect of what we're doing, actually. Kind of focuses on that.
Right, in a couple different conversations when I was explaining what the potential outcomes from a disruptive event would be-
Yes.
-there was a significant amount of dissatisfaction with how far away an actual effective sanction was, based on the number of incidents that it was required. So we've tightened that up considerably. I will share that that provides us with the discretion to do so, but not the requirement, because there may be circumstances where a single bad event is attributable to an aberration of an otherwise responsibly operated-
There is the possibility of a hearing too on this process, right?
Yes.
If there's a violation, so, I understand now, thank you.
Councilmember Gordon Young?
I just wanted to reiterate on this point, this is why I think it's so important that we have the homeowner's information. I don't want people to get dinged for having an Airbnb and they didn't even know, or an STR, sorry, they didn't know that there was an issue until they received something in the mail or until it was out of hand. So again, I want to support, but I want to make sure that we have all the elements in place so that we're not setting people up.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The motion is to receive and file. Please cast your ballots. This is unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business. Twenty-four dash sixty is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request to approve the sole source purchase of Econolite Traffic Cabinets from Traffic Controlled Corporation in an amount of $100,000, and this requires a two-thirds vote of the council members voting, no less than six votes.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to ask Director Powers to talk about the need for this purchase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, I appreciate it. This is our, basically our annual replenishment for traffic signal cabinets and associated parts. The reason they're sole source is because, again, they're there, they exist, and it's not something that we can wait and go through possible supply chain lags. When a signal goes down, we need to be on it and fix it. In a nutshell, that's it, and this is the vendor, the preponderance of our signal cabinets are sourced from.
Any questions? Councilmember Euler, move to approve. Seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Powers. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash sixty-one is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to approve the sole source annual subscription contract with Quicket Solutions, Inc., in the amount of $19,700, and this item requires a two-thirds vote of council members voting, no less than six votes.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you. I'm going to ask our Community Development Director to explain how we utilize this software and the reason why we're asking for your approval.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. The item in front of you is just the annual subscription renewal with an extra report capability for the system. So the Code Enforcement Division uses Quicket software to write citations out in the field. It's hooked up to GIS, it provides real-time kind of information for them, but the really neat feature that it does that very few softwares of this in the code enforcement world do is that it also automatically populates administrative hearings. So it's a great tool for our legal department, for the hearing officer. So the inspectors go out, they write citations, it automatically creates a docket for the legal department, and so then on those hearings, when we're hearing the cases, the hearing officer pulls those up, sees the photos from the inspectors, they can see the case history at the property as well. So it kind of gives them some valuable information in making the system. We were one of Quicket Solutions' first clients ever. They're a startup company six or seven years ago out of Champaign, Illinois, a couple graduate students that focused in police technology. They made a pitch to our police department, and they invited me because they had a mobile citation process, and I said, hey, the police department wasn't interested, but I said, hey, we'd be interested in you guys exploring something for that. So we have a first-time customer annual rate, which is why with most software packages, you see a much higher price. So that's part of the contract. Then the other part of the contract is about four years ago, we had them specifically design and build a notification system for us for when code inspectors are out in the field and if they abate and/or issue a work order on a property. If you sign up for the notification system, it'll send whoever signs up for that property a text message or email. This was kind of in response to our communications with landlords who say, why don't you call me when you have a problem? And we would explain, we're not your property manager, you should be proactively doing it. So this was kind of our middle ground to say, we're still not going to manage your property, but we'll at least give you a heads up we're there, and hopefully you can get the violation corrected quickly. And the last piece of this contract specifically deals with some of the work the legal department is doing in regards to improving their collection efforts. They are, need some custom fields, some custom reports, some custom information pulled from there, so that's the third part of this. So this is for the renewal for the contract for this year.
Thank you, Director. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This sounds like a really great tool, but why wasn't this in the budget?
So this is, it is in the budget, but this is, because it's over $15,000, so with the additional, when we first hired them, it was below the threshold that would have to come to council. Since then, the other annual subscription they have for the notification system gets us slightly over what the threshold is, and then with the additional money we're giving them for the reporting, it pushes them to $19,700 over the $15,000 mark, which is why the contract renewal, for the first time, is really coming to council and in the future will as well.
So you didn't anticipate this high renewal rate?
No, our purchasing ordinance requires anything over $15,000 that we have to come to council for approval, even if it's in the budget. So this is in, we have budgeted it-
Okay.
-and it's there, it just requires council to approve it.
Okay, thank you. Move to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Rigenbach. Any other questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash sixty-two is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to receive and file the month ended December 31, 2023, unaudited financial report.
Move to approve.
Okay. What are we approving? Oh, the financial, okay, all right. Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Thank you. All right, Director Craddy?
Just very briefly with the report. The revenues year-over-year are down about $10.8 million. The expenses are also down about $2.98 million year-over-year. I think the most important number to actually look at is going to be more looking at that budget-to-budget, which I'm happy to report at this point. We are still working on closing the books for the year to start our audit. We are sitting at 102% of our revenue collection and only 96% of our expenditure is out. So we're in the positive direction on both sides of that. We will have some additional revenues that come in throughout the rest of the year, like sales taxes that we will be booking, but we are on pace for the budget to be in line with what was presented to council during the 2024-2025 biennial budget process. So we are still in a strong financial position in that area. One other item that I just will bring to council's attention on the last, on the third, second to last page of the report, is a discussion on the bridge loan to the Peoria Civic Center. I am happy to report that the Civic Center was given reimbursement of the full $9.3 million from DCEO this month. While that will not show up on this report nor the January report, you will see that bridge loan clear in February. We may have additional drawdowns in future months as they start to do additional work in the summer, but the amount that they owe the city is being made whole via DCEO. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
I have a question related to the governor's proposed elimination of the 1% grocery tax.
As it stands right now, in our initial review of that proposal from the governor, that would be an elimination of around $4 million in revenue into our general fund. So just for kind of a communication standpoint to the community, those dollars are collected via the state, they're remitted to the municipality, those come in as our sales taxes. So we primarily fund our operations with sales taxes, including grocery taxes. When I look at these numbers, and this is just really for us to have kind of an understanding of the scope of what this is, that equates, that $4 million number is larger than 10 city departments, including the Emergency Communications Division, it includes the Community Development Department, both of those budgets are below $4 million. It equates to about 40% of the public works operations, 17% of the Fire Department operational budget, and about 12% of the Police Department budget. So the reality is, if the state goes forward with this proposal, there would have to be discussions on what that impact is going to be to our budget. The reality with a proposal like this is more than likely this will go into effect July 1 with the approval of the state budget, so it will impact immediately the '24 budget. Obviously, we'll have a larger $4 million impact in the '25 budget, but it will impact the '24 budget as well.
So I want to respond to that by saying that this, I believe, is the unintended consequences of what was deemed to be a break, something good for the residents of Illinois, without fully understanding the impact that it has on municipalities, cities across the state of Illinois like ours. We would not have anticipated $4 million annual loss moving forward from 2024 moving forward, and the, really the damage that it could cause to services, because it would mean significant deep cuts. We are communicating our concerns, the impact that would have on the city, to our state representatives, to our state legislators, and ultimately to the governor. Because, you know, other cities and also represented by the Illinois Municipal League, the IML, are very concerned about the impact that this would have on our budget, especially with the unfunded mandated pension liability, which is going to increase, you know, just significantly year after year. So, you know, there is a chance that this will pass in the budget. And if it does, we have to be prepared to take action, because it would be almost impossible for us to absorb this without, again, significant cuts to the services, to our employees, what percent of public works, what percent of community development.
So it would be 100% of community development, it's 40% of public works operations. And obviously, at the end of the day, it's probably not going to get cut in that direction, but I think it's always important to look at it in terms of that scale.
So an alternative, if this passes, is for the city to actually implement the 1% grocery tax. So the state has the funding, excuse me, the state of Illinois has the authority to eliminate this tax, but the city, especially home rural cities, can reinstate it locally. Is that right, Council Hayes, Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the governor has also said that certainly we don't want to take anything away from our residents, but we would be taken away from our residents by cutting services significantly. So I, I just want to say one last thing about that. During COVID, there was a temporary elimination of the grocery tax, but the state of Illinois paid that back to the city. So it was temporary, but it was returned to us. This would not be returned to us. Any, can you add anything to that, Mr. Manager?
Well, I, I think as Director Craddy said, and as you said, that the state held us whole. It's a $4 million hit. It's a, you know, clearly it was unanticipated, but, you know, if it goes into effect July 1, it could be something that we would see immediately in this year as well. So it's a concern.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Seer?
Oh, I don't know where to start with this one. Thank you for meeting with me this morning, Director Craddy, number one. Number two, I had three questions. Two of them's been answered, I believe. Obviously, when I talk to you, the last few months, I always ask you, you know, what is your biggest fear for our budget moving forward? And I think that 1% tax was one of them. Probably cost us a million seven, because, you know, just to make sure everybody understands, listening to our conversation, state budgets start July 1st, so it cost us a million seven this year if they eliminate that 1%. Is that correct?
Obviously, it's based off if it's a straight-line collection, yeah, it's about 1.7 million.
Correct. Now, just to make sure we all understand also, usually, usually when there's cuts like this, does it cut, does the cut come from the capital investment or come from operation? Usually.
Usually because of where the revenue sources are, it's, it's coming out of the operations side.
Operation, very important to understand that. The second thing about our conversation from the past, we all know, I think we all know that, you know, there are some conversations in Springfield that to eliminate Tier Three from pension, which would be tremendous, tremendous problem for every cities in the state of Illinois. If that happened, you know, we talked before about emergencies, we talked before about not spending, you know, all our emergency money. You know, we're below $50 million right now as we speak, and some of us were here a couple years ago when we had to have some type of pension for our fire department. So let's keep the conversation going, that's all I'm saying. I mean, Director Craddy and I know our manager, they just know what's, what's in the future, what, what our elected official are talking about in Springfield. In Springfield, that would not be good for the city of Peoria. So let's just be careful about that. The other thing is, there's a trend in our real estate taxes, our revenues. Can you explain that to everybody who's listening, why our real estate tax revenues coming down a little bit? Thank you very much for all the work you do, Director Craddy, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely, just, just really briefly. On the property tax chart, you will see that that number's going down. In reality, that's a misnomer to our tax collections. The reason that is occurring is we had three TIFs expire. So the overall property tax number you see on here includes that full collection of the TIFs. When those expired, that increment that the city was collecting is now being remitted to the other taxing bodies. So that's why you see a drop-off, when really the city over the last couple of years has captured that new value of property. So the actual levy that we're using towards pensions has gone up equal to that growth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Craddy, I, I know that you are responsible for what I'm about to say. I, I would just like the, all of us and the public to understand that because our income went up somewhat and our expenditures went, versus, versus the budget, and our expenditures went down versus the budget, the differential there is about $7 million, which put us in a place where we had budgeted for a deficit, and it turns out to be a surplus this year. So, and I know that it's, I know that it's you that did that, Director Craddy, but I, I think it's an important thing to know. We are, we are on the plus side, unanticipated plus side for 2023. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. We have a motion to receive and file. Please cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Craddy. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. We don't have anything, so we are at new business.
Any new business? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, if we could, if we can get a report back on the status of the ICE being implemented at the Civic Center. I've heard rumors of this summer, if we could, if the council can just get a confirmation on that. Also, I am aware that I believe there was an extension with the Riverman for the lease of the '24-'25 season, and if maybe we can get some clarity on when are the negotiations that are going to reoccur for maybe an ex, a potential extension of that, just so that way we're prepared to answer any questions that we get filled in from the public of when the ICE is getting implemented, what are the negotiations looking like between the Civic Center and the Riverman, just so that way we can be privy to that information?
Will do.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Vesper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm encouraged by what I heard earlier. I know everyone's left the chamber and we're tired of hearing about it, but with regard to the distillery TIF, you know, we are, we're working to put together language that does address the CO2 pipeline concern. And, you know, make no mistake, that is a boondoggle. You know, it's, it's put together by energy companies so that they can continue to drill, drill fossil fuels and then put the CO2 underground, and then labor likes it because tons and tons of jobs, but you have to put lives over jobs. It's totally unacceptable and unconscionable to put a kind of risk like that on our most vulnerable population. So I know Wolf has pulled their application when they, when they do refile. I, I will be asking for a moratorium. Thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
We have four comments. First, we have Tom Logan.
Since July 2nd, I crashed my car in a wreck, and 61 years of driving is the worst accident I've ever made, mistake, but anyway. Since then, I've been riding the bus everywhere, and I've been out at the corner of Allen Road and Townline Road where the Arby's Restaurant is there. And I, after I got off the bus, I walked over there and went down this hill, which is about a 45-degree angle, but I thought, well, I won't slide. And I went in and ate, and I was thinking about, boy, this is kind of dangerous. They don't have any guard rail up there. Well, since July 2nd, a school bus has jumped the curbing and gone over the, gone over and crashed into the building. And, and also recently, a car did the same thing, went over the, jumped the curbing and went over the, down the hill and hit the building. Now, fortunately, nobody was hurt, but it could have wind up in an injury to people and somebody getting killed. And next time, it just might be a semi coming over that curb. So I think the city of Peoria needs to build a guard rail, a steel guard rail or a cement guard rail that could stop any kind of vehicle from coming down that hill. And it's just not safe for anyone, and I urge the city of Peoria to build this and build it soon. Like I said, since July 2nd, there's been two crashes into the building. Fortunately, nobody's been hurt.
Thank you, Mr. Logan.
Madam Mayor, city council members, respected attendees, good evening, everybody. My name is Sohal Al Hoar, and I have been living in Peoria for more than two decades, and I am a professor at Bradley University. I must start by apologizing for the strong address that I'm going to give you right now because I'm a man of passion, and I really feel strongly about the issue I'm going to be talking about. Two weeks ago, more than 25 people, I think, and I stood before you in this chamber to ask that you consider adopting a ceasefire resolution in support of the people of Palestine who are being massacred by the Israeli war machine with financing from our tax dollars. It's not that such a resolution will make Israel stop its genocide. It's more to show that our city has a heart and that it stands for the most basic of human rights, the right to live, and for the sanctity of human life. Madam Mayor, I was extremely disappointed by the statement you released right after the city council meeting two weeks ago. Clearly, your statement was prepared in advance, which indicates a complete disdain toward everyone who spoke about the issue that night and everyone else in our city who supports the call for a ceasefire. You may still be adamant about your position, so let me put, put it in perspective for you. One may understand neutrality in the case of a war when two armies of two countries are involved in a fight over disputed territory or to defend their interests. But what's going on in Palestine is not a war. What we have going on in Palestine is an occupying army, which is one of the strongest and best-equipped armies in the world, is indiscriminately dropping 2,000 bombs, 2,000-pound bombs on residential buildings, hospitals, schools, churches, mosques, and refugee camps, and killing and maiming scores of innocent children, women, and men. Even the dead are not being spared, as cemeteries are being systematically disaccredited by the Israeli forces. What we have going on in Palestine is a crime against humanity, according to all reasonable observers. It is a case of collective punishment, using all kinds of illegal means of warfare. What we are witnessing in Palestine is one of the most atrocious crimes of our time. And when you are witnessing a crime, you cannot be decent and neutral at the same time. You are either actively defending the victim by any means that you can, or you are participating in the crime. When the crime is happening right before your eyes and you do not do the minimum you can to possibly save the victim, or at least to voice your condemnation of the crime, you are participating in it. When a crime is taking place right before your eyes, you either stand up for the victim with whatever means you have, or you are one of the criminals. There is no in-between. I do not believe that you all are uninformed. One has to be living in a dark and soundproof bubble not to be aware of what's going on in Palestine nowadays. I do not believe that you are not smart enough to understand the gravity of what's going on. You have to have a minimum level of intelligence to get elected, or so I hope. As we speak, there are nearly a million people in Gaza who are at risk of dying from hunger because of the Israeli bombings and continued blockade of the Strip. Just in February, the amount of aid that was able to get into Gaza dropped by 50% from originally insufficient amounts during January. So the only reason I see for, see for your refusal to bring a ceasefire resolution to vote in is your complete bias towards the aggressor, for whatever reason you have, may it be financial, racism, or other. This is a clear bias towards a criminal apartheid state, and that makes you a participant in the crime. There will be elections coming up, and Madam Mayor, I did quietly campaign for you during the last elections. And I can tell you that my wife and I, our children and significant, and their significant others, all of our friends and their significant others, and anyone else we will be able to influence, and I can tell you that we will be putting in the effort, will not vote for anyone who tolerates genocide. I love our city, and I do not think, and I do not think it should be run by people who lost their sense of humanity and refused to stand up against genocide. Thank you for listening. Free Palestine.
Ramaz Abi Akar?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. By coincidence, I happen to have similar comments to Mr. Sohal. I am Ramaz Abi Akar, 29 years Peorian. The topic for, the reason for me coming here tonight is to fight or dispel the mischaracterization that happened last time after we talked two weeks ago requesting ceasefire. We heard in the media and on the internet stuff that we do not, nobody should believe. Let's try to do that. I'm hoping that everybody here knows some facts. I'm going to recall some of the background that everybody needs to know about the historical background of this issue. There is a substantial volume of Peorians in, in Peoria here whose roots are from the Middle East, the large Lebanese community in particular where I descend from. The massive disorder on the Palestinian land, Gaza and West Bank in this time, is a matter of huge concern on the humanitarian level. This is what we are addressing in you. The issue is beyond a war between Israel and Hamas as the media, by deception, makes you feel. The Palestinian people are constantly under military occupation of a foreign country, prohibiting them from governing themselves in a democratic way. The land they live on is not part of Israel, is not part of Israel. As the UN says explicitly, Israel as of now has no determined borders like every country on earth. Israel has no determined borders. Israel and Palestine are two different entities, separate one from another. Maybe the public doesn't know this historical fact. They think all are part of Israel. Just accepting this fact, gentlemen, would be a start for a resolution to the long-term conflict. From the point of my view of Lebanon, of a Lebanese person, it has always, Lebanon has always been in the center of the storm. Lebanon has rarely been in a peaceful stand because of its proximity to the ongoing violence. We'd love our first country to live in peace. What I aim to in this brief talk is to raise the attention on the original facts of this conflict. Just remove the occupation, just remove the oppression, and the issue will settle the next day. Lebanon would be free, so would Palestine, so would Israel whenever it has well-determined borders, unlike today, it is flexible. Only then, everybody will be happy, and every country in the region will be secure. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Terry Burnside?
Evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, council, and administration, excuse me, I'm a little raspy. I came here tonight just in reference to agenda item 24-045. It's about weeding litter contract. Then I was kind of moved to even start to talk about some contracting issues, because I have my contractor based off of something Mr. Jackson said tonight, and also something Mr. Vespa said, and Mr. Reganbott. So we talked about some of the goose eggs up there on the, on this presentation that was given tonight. It's somewhat disturbing, because as a contractor, tonight, I was given a correspondence last week from the purchasing department saying that my, my contract wouldn't be considered tonight unless I paid a stormwater bill, and it was supported by a ordinance, city ordinance, saying if you don't pay this bill, we will not concede you for this contract that's up for council on the 27th. So what I do, I went and paid the bill, so that would be considered. This is talk about the contractors, I like to talk about level playing fields. It's kind of disturbing even to hear City Manager Urick talking about responding to Mr. Jackson and say, because we're not prime contractors, or because we're not skilled trades, that some of the stuff we would not be considered for. Well, I consider myself a skilled tradesman, I've been doing work for the city of Peoria and the Peoria City County Health Department since 2010. I'm right now probably the only licensed-led contractor Afro-American in the city of Peoria. But some of the concern I have is being a level playing field, there are a lot of RFPs that come out that we don't, let me just talk about me, that I don't get invites to or RFPs for, but I have received them for a $400 million combined sewage overflow RFP. I've been on that list, because I guess I'm on the list of contractors, I have received those RFPs, but there's no removal contract that's annually, I never received a RFP for that. There is a subcurrent concern I have about maintaining municipal properties for the city, whether it's some of the greenery or some of the stuff like that, the plants and vegetation, I've never received a RFP for that, nor has there ever been a RFP circulated for that kind of stuff. Then I go on to look about, as a contractor, I will be considered for what I call some of the low-hanging fruit, like a mowing contract, or a city board-up contract, or even a weeding litter contract, which here, again, that's not a skilled trade or issue that should be considered for a smaller entity like myself. I've had conversations with Mr. Kevin Evans, I have conversations with Mr. Joe Doolin to see if we could get different resources to help us get some operating capital, not just operating capital, maybe we could get more and better equipment to help us better sustain ourselves and get more opportunities. Always fell on deaf ears. I go back to the conversations I had with Mr. Farah Mohammed, and even with our most recent director, Green, and I talked about some of these disparities and some of this fairness, and still, yet to get responses to these kind of things. I don't know, it just kind of bothers me how we, you know, certain contractors will get considered for certain things, but other things we get excluded from, so I just wanted to bring that to you all's attention, but I would encourage everybody, I heard somebody said they're going to go back and look at some of the communication around those goose eggs across the board for years, I would encourage you all, go look at some of the emails, and look at some of the things that were sent out, who were invited to the table? I encourage you, no man or a contractor that I know of was even invited to the table, including myself. So I would encourage you all to do that, and you could, you know, get better answers. Again, excuse me for my little raspy voice, but I just want to say that, share that tonight, it's just what stirred in me to say something after I heard Councilman Jackson respond about the contractors. Thank you for your time, and enjoy your evening.
You're welcome. Clerk?
We are at executive session.
I would like to invite a motion to adjourn and to convene in closed session immediately following the adjournment of the city council meeting pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 I L C S 122 C 1 to discuss the performance of a specific employee, and pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 I L C S 122 C 21 for the approval by the body of closed session minutes. Moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cash your ballots. Thank you for your service.